way to wear a mask. And as our Dr. Newman has taught, told us that your nose and your mouth need to be covered. So. We just wanted to start with the proper way to use them. Thank you. Well, good evening. I am Ramona Curtis and I'm the Director for Diversity Outreach Programs at Tulsa Community College. And I am so happy to be in my hometown to host this town hall on the impact of COVID-19 on the African American community. I want to thank Dr. Newman, Dr. Henry, Commissioner Gibson for the opportunity and for their leadership in coordinating this event. We welcome you to our town hall. It is being streamed on Facebook Live, so of course you know that. And it is hosted by the Waco Chapter of the NAACP, the City of Waco, McLennan County, and the Family Health Center. The purpose of this town hall is to answer your questions and give you information regarding health, economics, and social impact of this disease or this virus on the African American community. We are here because there has been a consistent spike in the numbers of cases, of new cases in our community. We're here specifically to discuss this impact on African Americans and particularly our communities. A healthy community is a desire for all of us. So our panel wants to give your, give you information that will save your life, that will ease your anxiety, and that will inform you of ways to move forward staying safe. I hope this evening finds you healthy as we continue to endure and grow together in our new normal. I have the honor of introducing our expert panel today. And so this evening, we have Dr. Peaches Henry, who is President of the NAACP's Waco Chapter. And we miss seeing your beautiful face, Dr. Henry, but we wish you a speedy recovery from your eye surgery. Dr. Eliotta Newman, who's a family medicine physician at the Family Health Center. County Commissioner Patricia Chizum Miller, Precinct 2. Councilwoman Andrea Bearfield, Mayor Pro Tem, District 1. And I'm happy to have one of our young people here because we know that there's a surge in that particular community. She's a recent, Ms. Veronica Prince is a recent Baylor University graduate and a first year medical student. So we're happy to have her as well. I have a few questions to get us started. But if you have questions, I want you to know that you can, if you look at the bottom of your screen, there is a Q and A section of this webinar. If you click on there, you can ask, you can type your questions in and we'll be happy to get to them. If we don't get to them here, we will continue to answer those questions and get you the information that you need. So continue to check those updates from the city and from the county leadership. So let's get started. Dr. Henry, on the last second, the NAACP's National Chapter put out a statement that said, "Federal negligence is responsible for the increase in COVID-19 cases." They go on to urge that all federal, state, and local government leaders take the necessary precautions toward an effective and responsible resuming of activities and to ensure that the lives of our people are weighed more prominently than others, than other people's monetary gains. So can you speak to the importance of having this discussion today?
Good evening, everyone. Hello to our panelists. Thank you so much for joining in this effort to educate our community. And welcome to all of you who are here with us. Just two weeks ago, McLennan County had 473 confirmed cases of COVID-19. As of today, the county had 2,438. McLennan County's case count is the fifth highest per capita in Texas. Today, the 15th person in McLennan County has died of COVID-19. She was a 41-year-old African American woman. 155 more McLennan County residents have tested positive for the disease as of today. 25% of those who tested positive are in their 20s. Of those who have died of the virus, six have been black, six have been Hispanic, and three have been white. That means that 80% of the people who are dying from COVID-19 are people of color. Officials at the national level have no interest in providing Americans with life-saving information about this disease. Even people who had national organizations such as the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention are not willing to do their duty, which is provide scientifically-based information to citizens about how to protect themselves from the coronavirus. And following the federal government in its neglect of its citizens and reopening, the Texas governor has created a dangerous and deadly situation across the state. The result has been that since the reopening in May, Texas has seen a 680% increase in positive COVID-19 cases. It is our community, our people, the Black and Brown people, who are getting sick and who are dying. Because no one is coming to save us, we must save ourselves. It is toward that end that the Waco NAACP, in conjunction with the City of Waco, McLennan County, and the Family Health Center have come together to present this town hall. We want to give you trustworthy information and to answer your questions and concerns so that you can save your lives and the lives of your loved ones. This is a moment in our country when we truly must save ourselves. And so we want to give you the information that you're going to need to do that. So let's get going.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. And I appreciate your comments. And as we came on, you saw where we wanted to show the proper way to wear the mask. You gave us quite a bit of information. And we've had a town hall like this prior to the surge in numbers in McLennan County. So I'd like to pose this question to Dr. Newman and Commissioner Miller. As you prepare to coordinate this town hall meeting, what were you hoping that our viewers will walk away with today? Because we've done one of these before and yet we've seen these surges.
Okay, good evening. Do you want to go, Dr. Newman?
No, please, Commissioner Miller, please go.
Okay, well, good evening to everyone tuning in. And as Dr. Henry said, as, as we mourn the passing of our latest COVID-19 victim, an African American female at the age of 41, I believe this is the most appropriate time to speak to the disparities in the African American community as it relates to COVID-19. Lacking an appropriate national response, our federal government appears to be tone deaf in addressing this disease. Our state government appears to be lacking also as it pertains to the plight of minorities living and surviving this pandemic. So I see it most appropriate that advocates are needed at this time to affirm the value of African American life. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, 19.7%, or just under 20% of African Americans are able to work from home. That means the majority of us are essential workers and we have been required to return to work. The majority of these jobs are lower-paying positions that do not allow African Americans to create savings. And so in times such as this, we must work to pay our bills. As we return into work, we're placed in a position to be exposed more so than others to the, the chance of contracting the coronavirus. And all this is happening while the Trump administration appears before the Supreme Court, asking the court to strike down the Affordable Care Act, an act that covers over 23 million Americans with healthcare. This is happening also while the state of Texas continues to be one of 17 states that has decided it will not expand Medicaid, while being home to 4.7 million people without health insurance and having the highest uninsured rate in the country. All this is happening to us in the midst of a global health crisis. So I hope today's discussion will outline ways for us to protect ourselves, our families, and our essential workers. I hope we are able to highlight the need to continue the advocacy of jobs that pay quality wages and provide essential healthcare benefits. And I hope the takeaway is an increased knowledge of COVID-19 along with the tools needed to economically survive this crisis.
Wow, yeah, much needed. Dr. Newman?
I first want to thank Commissioner Miller. That was so well said and so appreciated. What I was going to say in response to, we did do this before, why are we doing it again? And I think to me, it was important to do it because I think this, this requires an ongoing conversation. Information changes from day to day, our understanding of the virus, the, our capacity to test, our goals in testing. And as I've said before, I've been in medicine now for 20 years. And this is the, the situation in which most I have found a lack of leadership from top organizations that I usually count on to give us clear guidance and to be scientifically based. And so we're all kind of patching things up and making things up, trying to do the best we can with the information we have. And so I think this requires ongoing conversations. And so I think this was very needed and I hope that we continue to have these conversations. I think another thing that happens is sometimes our community, our vulnerable communities, we decide to jump in every once in a while and say a few things to them to make them think that we're not ignoring them. But true consistency and being present in good times and in bad times is, is part of the way that we're going to continue to build trust, which we have lost from our own negligence and lack of treating all of our, all our citizens with the same compassion and respect. And so to reverse that is going to take time and a consistent effort, and that's why we're here. And again, you know, things change regarding our understanding of the virus. And I think in the way that our community is responding to it. And I'm grateful to have the opportunity to try to clarify some of the misunderstandings and, and to highlight the good things that we have, some of the good information that we have been able to glean over these last few months dealing with this pandemic.
Thank you so much. This is much needed. We've seen, you know, talking about young people, we, we just saw, well, you've just been reporting today that a 41-year-old African American female has succumbed to the virus. Recent news reports talk about this surge in young people contracting COVID-19 and dying from it. Ms. Prince, in your opinion, as, as our young person on this panel, what is it going to take to get young people to take heed that this is very serious?
Also, good, good evening, everyone. Glad to be here. In my experience from my peer group and my age group, I've learned that there's a disconnect among us. You know, in the beginning, when news was coming in and people were worrying about symptoms, how do I tell if I have it? When testing was scarce, it was, oh, if you have these symptoms, you should go get tested. Or if you have these symptoms, be proactive and self-isolate or self-quarantine for 14 days. And then it came out that, oh, you may be asymptomatic. If you're in this age group, you may experience different symptoms. And I feel like for my age group that registered, oh, asymptomatic, I'm going to just go enjoy this extended summer. I'm going to enjoy this extended spring break and things of that nature. For instance, there are people in my age group that decided to have parties and celebrate and throw Corona parties and things of that nature. So I believe for us, it's beginning to be real. Sadly, it took us taking over the incoming case volume for it to register. But I also wanted to get on here to make sure that there, that we understand specifically in my age group that asymptomatic does not mean, oh, I'm not as susceptible to it. Asymptomatic simply means that I may not present in the same way as someone who's older or younger than me, but my susceptibility to Corona or to potentially spreading it to someone else is just as severe and should be treated as such. And so I feel like that's the first step in my age group taking it more seriously. And then in addition to that, I would just like to say, get tested. Even though you may not have the symptoms, just go. There's no stigma surrounding it as, as far as we are concerned in our age group. It's just about going. Really, the biggest thing is, oh, I don't have the symptoms. I feel fine. I'm not going to go get tested. I'm just going to, you know, continue on with life. And so that's what I wanted to get on here and address first and foremost. And then secondly, I was thankful to Dr. Peaches who had us come on here wearing the mask and wearing them appropriately. Because a lot of things that I've seen in the 20 age group is having it to where the nose is out or wearing it kind of like as like a chin strap type thing or doing the whole, oh, I'm going to be on the phone, so let me, you know, hang it on my ear like this, and then when I'm talking, do this. Mm-hmm. So that's another thing that I wanted to make sure I addressed. And then lastly, sorry, these are just things that I see all the time amongst peers, classmates, social media, going live, all of that good stuff. Sanitation is not a substitute. If you can wash your hands, wash them. I, we have these little spray sanitizers that we love to use and that's great, but nothing beats soap and water. So whenever you have the chance, wash your hands, especially if you have just gone out or if you're about to eat, or if you've just left the restroom, or if you've just had contact with someone. Find your nearest restroom, wash your hands. Sanitizing is great, but it just doesn't beat soap and water. So those are the things that I wanted to make sure I addressed specifically concerning my age group. Because those are the biggest things that I've encountered or heard of.
I want to, I want to stay right there to talk about, you know, you talked about asymptomatic. Someone may not be presenting any of the symptoms, but yet they have tested positive for Corona. I had a family member who has those symptoms. What I want, what I want to know on this is, how do we then protect others who are in the home with someone who is, who has tested positive, who's in the home but recovering? So if you could give us, Dr. Newman and Ms. Prince, if you guys could share with us how to help, help be healthy and safe in taking care of the family and that individual?
Ramona, just to clarify the question. And so you're saying if we have a family member who has tested positive, but is not symptomatic, and we want to help take care of them? So one-
And those around, and those around, you know.
So, you know, this is a really strange virus. There is a lot of confusion around it, which again is the reason that we're doing this. So be, when you can be asymptomatic, but that me, that doesn't mean you're not contagious. And so at this point, you know, we don't have a treatment, we don't have vaccines. We don't know how you're going to do. And so you can be positive and, you know, not have any symptoms. You can have mild symptoms or you can die. And why that happens and how that happens seems a lot more random than we initially thought. Since as was mentioned earlier, a large percentage of our deaths are actually under, are, are under 65. And so if some, if one of your family members is positive, they need to be isolated. And so that means you can bring them groceries and leave them outside for them to come and get them. You can run errands for them, but you don't want to come into contact with them. We recommend self-isolation for, if you don't have symptoms, that would still be for 10 days from the time that you were tested positive so that you don't get other people sick. What we need to do right now as a community, because not only are we suffering health-wise, but we're suffering economically, the more that this virus is mishandled. And so we don't have a way to fix anything. So testing is not always the answer, especially because testing supplies are actually running low. And so right now, we're actually testing symptomatic people. But if you have been exposed or if you have tested positive, then you need to reduce the risk of transmission by isolating. And family members need to help by bringing things but not coming into contact. A lot of our families, both in the Brown and Black communities, live in extended families with other people and may not have resources to have their own bedroom and their own bathroom. You can still self-isolate as much as you can by continuing to wear your face mask. That's one of the pieces of good news that we've had since the last town hall, is that we know that face masks actually are very effective in being able to decrease transmission if everybody wears them. And so if somebody in your house is positive, everybody needs to wear face masks in the house while we're isolating. They need to use their own bathrooms. They need, and if there's only one bathroom, then that's okay. Just wipe it down afterwards. The other weird thing about this virus is that even though it can be very deadly, it's actually pretty easy to take care of with a little bit of soap and water. So wipe things down after you've used them. Use your own utensils, stay in your room as much as possible. Other people may need to sleep out in the living room. But there is ways of being supportive while a person is recovering. And we all need to continue to do that in order to decrease the transmission and help our community.
Thank you so much. We've got a, we've got a question here about the mask. And so this is very important. The community wants to know. And so the question is, I've heard that the safest kind of mask should be made of cloth. Can any of you give more information on the kind of cloth masks that are the safest? Also, I was told that inserting a coffee filter between the layers of a cotton scarf that are bandana is helpful. Is there any truth to that? I think our healthcare-
So anything that you use to cover your face is helpful. If you're only using a bandana, that's wonderful. If you are going to use surgical, if you are going to use cloth, one of the types of cloth that is known to have really good protection is the pillowcases made out of 600 thread count. And so if you go to Walmart and find 600 thread count pillowcases, those can actually be useful. The other thing that was really useful was vacuum cleaner filters are very useful. And so you can try to make a mask out of that or put it in what other, other face covering you're using. Coffee filters can also be helpful, especially if you layer them. There's a lot more information about this on the CDC website that is valid and good. And on the FA, on the Family Health Center website, we also have some more information about that. The important thing is to cover your nose and your face and to maintain six feet of distance as much as possible and to do things outside. If you are going to meet a friend, meet them outside and not inside of buildings. Those are the things that we know are the most useful. And then all these other things are also helpful. But cover your nose and your mouth.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. Thank you so much. That was very good. I want to talk now about the economic impact. And we, we do have a couple more questions that are coming in about testing and we want to get to those certainly before we wrap up here. But I do want to talk about the economic impact. On Tuesday, there was a call to support African American businesses. And judging from the Facebook post, it looked like it was a great turnout. Nationwide, African American small business owners are disproportionately affected by this virus. We also know that in excess of, we also know that they access financing much less often. And so are we seeing this true in McLennan County? What is the message from our, from the panel to our local Black businesses? And I will ask Councilman, Councilwoman Bearfield, will you begin that answer for us, please?
Certainly. And again, thank you and good evening to everyone who's joining us. So during our two pandemics that we're dealing with right now, we've seen a lot of intentional effort given to stimulate our, our economy, especially in the Black community. From, when I say the two, I mean, you know, COVID-19 and our, the social injustice that has been in existence for 101 years, but has been manifesting on screen for, you know, currently in a very short circuit almost every day. And it is that pot boiling over demanded and insisted on change. And so the, one of the things that happened is the change in focus of our economy. So, you know, people are, are utilizing and supporting Black and Brown businesses. But we, you know, for this conversation, we'll talk about Black businesses more to try to atone for some of the social injustice that we're dealing with. Not the answer to the question, but a part. So let's break that down. So if you look at what we're doing from a city perspective, dealing with the COVID-19 part. So at the very beginning, when businesses were applying for our federal stimulus and PPP and idle loans, and our Black and Brown businesses were not getting approved for those loans. You know, the City of Waco and the county, you know, said, what can we do? And our, our city staff members got to moving really quickly about what kind of income or monies could we make available for our businesses? So at that point, we created the Small Business Relief Fund. And with the help of a grant from the CDBG and the McLennan County, well, Wedmec Economic Development Corporation that we have, we have so far awarded $428,504 to 154 businesses. And of those 154 businesses, 117 were women-owned or a person of color owned. And I think that's important that, you know, within, I know staff, I think it was 72 hours, they had that grant mounted and available. And the grant is back open as of, and as of yesterday, we had 117 applicants. The grant will close again on Monday. So if you are a small business, particularly a business of color, apply. It's a five, up to $5,000 and it's a grant. It's not a loan, it's a grant. And those are the things you don't have to pay back, but it'll help you with payroll, with rents, with, you know, any of those things that it take inventory to run your business. And those are the things that we knew were necessary for us to do as a city to help our businesses, our Main Street mom and pop businesses stay afloat because they are the heart and soul of our community. The other part of that is that we've been doing the Rental Assistance Program and 125 applicants have applied so far. And in that partnership with EOAC, you know, we, we will continue to see about providing rental assistance and utility assistance for our people who need them. And that's COVID-related. So the pandemic that we've, that we've lived through in systemic racism has, the call has been to energize and empower businesses. And so we've seen things like Facebook groups pop up with, that focused on a specific genre. So Rocky Miller created a Facebook group about Waco-owned, Black-owned restaurants. Okay? Because it was as simple as, you know, where, what are the Black-owned restaurants we can support? And at this point, there are over 2,600 members in that group. And shout out to Bradley Ford, who is Deputy City Manager, soon-to-be City Manager, who has a thing about making Google Maps. And so he decided to take the information that the, organically was, was organized and cultivated through Facebook, right? Through us talking to one another about how we support Black businesses. And he put together a Google map of where all the businesses were. So we've identified the 32 Black-owned restaurants or food trucks within the city. And, you know, those are the things that, that, that we can use to push and stimulate one another. And, you know, the African American Chamber of Commerce has their, their, their fund that they have created to empower small businesses and will utilize their business fund to utilize and sow into small businesses. Some of our larger businesses have done things and outreach to stimulate the economy of Black businesses. Magnolia this weekend had a virtual Black Business Fair, Black-owned vendor fair. And it had a lot of likes and shares. And I hope that those people, those business owners made a lot of money. But it is exposure and access and just knowledge of that has continued to turn Waco and turn Black businesses in Waco. And I think that that's one of those things that, that though a trigger may have caused it, now that door is open and should never close.
Absolutely. And I think you're right. I tell you, there is some good eats in Waco.
That is not a problem. Us eating is not a problem here. We eat well.
And food has been such a fellowship, you know, African American families center around food. It is a lot of comfort around that and specific types of foods. So I'm glad to hear that the Black businesses are moving forward and that there's, there's a lot of help out there and they're taking advantage of that help. But, you know, now that we're on here, we're talking about this impact and we've got this captive audience. What is the specific cultural message to the African American community as we see these numbers of cases of coronavirus? Are there barriers to good health? Are there barriers to good health? Uh, is it social injustice? Uh, I'm, I'm asking the panelists and whoever wants to tackle this question. What is this cultural message? We are really trying to get here that is culturally specific to the African American community on safety in this moment of this pandemic?
Well, I'll jump in first and then allow time for anyone to come behind me. Uh, the most important thing that I would say is that it's not the fault of the African American community, nor the Hispanic community as far as the way COVID nineteen ravages, uh, on unhealthy bodies. I think, uh, we make a mistake when we blame those demographics for their health conditions when we know that they're structural and systemic, uh, issues that we have had to, uh, overcome. Uh, we need to make sure we understand that there are environmental factors. Uh, sometimes the places where we have to live, uh, are surrounded by environmental hazards. Uh, uh, unclean water, uh, unhealthy air. And so it's not surprising that African American men, uh, develop lung cancer fifty percent more than white men do. Uh, it's not surprising that African Americans, uh, have respiratory illnesses and asthma at greater rates than any of the other demographic groups. So if there is a, a takeaway on this, we need to understand the stressor uh, that racism, uh, does to, uh, the African American body. Uh, we live in food deserts. And so it's not, uh, always, uh, easy to, uh, acquire healthy foods. Uh, we could work on healthy habits, but our, our food supply is not our fault. And so I think what COVID nineteen is making us do is pay attention to number one, the disparity that is affecting the African American community when it comes to access to quality preventive healthcare, when it comes to, uh, affordable quality housing. And when it comes to, uh, where we live and how environmental factors need to, uh, be addressed by, uh, policymakers and elected officials. So, um, I don't want us to think we did something wrong and that's why we're sick. Uh, I want us to see it as a partnership. We do need to, uh, address some things. Even I need to get off the couch sometimes, stop watching Netflix and take a walk around the block. Uh, but, uh, if there's a takeaway, I don't want us to assume the full fault of our health condition.
Oh, I, well, I wanna, again, going on along, uh, what you're talking about here. I want to ask Dr. Newman and, uh, Ms. Prince, what are those underlying medical conditions, uh, that put the African American at risk? And, uh, do they include respiratory conditions? And then what should we be doing to prevent the spread of the virus? Uh, I, I think Commissioner, uh, Miller has given, uh, some, some great statistics. But what, while we're here, what are those underlying medical, uh, issues?
I'll start off and then I'll, I'll give a moment to Ms. Prince to come back after me. So we know that in the African American community, we carry a much heavier burden of diabetes, hypertension and respiratory diseases. Again, exactly like Commissioner Miller has been saying, um, these aren't things that we're not going to blame the victim. Um, a lot of the reasons that we do carry a heavy burden of disease is because of, um, structural inequalities and racism, um, that have put our communities at more risk uh, for, um, both being in jobs, um, that put us more at risk for certain respiratory conditions, um, in not having access to food that, um, prevents, uh, the other healthcare conditions. Um, and then also having poor access to medical care and to the medications we need in order to keep us healthy. So this is definitely not a burden that, uh, our people should be carrying on their own shoulders. Um, but, um, but I do want people to feel empowered that even though there are so many things that are going against them, um, our communities have always shown resilience, um, and strength. Um, and that this is one of those times when we need to say, this virus is killing us um, in great disproportion to other people. It's showing the inequalities that have existed. And we're going to take it upon ourselves to do what we can within our own spheres, which means getting off the couch instead of watching Netflix all day. Um, and, you know, and finding your way to a doctor. We're fortunate in Waco that the Family Health Center that serves sixty thousand people a year is still accepting new patients. Um, the number is three-one-three-four-six-ten, three-one-three-four-six-ten. Come on in, get a doctor, get your health conditions under control. Um, and, um, and, and right now we're at the stage in this virus, you know, and when this initially started happening, uh, the city responded so magnificently. And I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Bearfield for being part of the shutting down and having us really, um, break down that curve initially and keeping us safe for the longest time. Uh, then things were taken out of our hands and a lot of other things happened. And, um, restrictions were, well, rolled back pretty quickly. Um, and now the, the spread is so endemic everywhere, um, that it is now more about thinking about how to, um, keep our community safe. And that means wearing masks, um, and still, um, recognizing that this is not over. Um, it's not time to go to the mall. It's not time to visit with your families. Visit on Zoom, you can share a meal over Zoom, you can share a picnic. I've had a couple of picnics outside, uh, socially distancing, um, with one, one friend at a time. Um, and this is still time to be careful and we are empowered to do that. And, um, and we are not going to just be led by our noses, by other people that say, no, go out there and do whatever you want to do, um, because the economy matters and because I want to get reelected. No, we need to take care of ourselves and we can do that. And so wear your face mask. And Ms. Prince.
Thank you. So, yeah, I support everything that Dr. Newman just said, but to add on to that, in African, African American community, there are certain conditions that do put us at an increased risk or makes coronavirus a little bit more of a concern for us. And those include sickle cell disease, any type of immunocompromised state. So that means if you have a weakened immune system, obesity, so less Netflix, maybe more walking. Um, it's really lifestyle things, COPD, uh, diabetes, we talked about. But also I liked what Commissioner Miller said about, you know, we are not supposed to fault ourselves for how our bodies are being affected by coronavirus, but also in general, because it's not necessarily just a health thing. There's also public health and structural things that play into it. And on the City of Waco website, they have a chart where you can see a rank of activities, recreational activities that are low risk to high risk. And I took a look at that because I wanted to kind of formulate how I was gonna share what needed to be shared in a way that was able to be absorbed. And, uh, if you look at the high risk, there are things like going to a bar or going to an amusement park or outside, um, or any type of concert type thing where there's a lot of people in one area. And I wanted to draw, um, a, sorry, a comparison to that and, and position that besides, beside our everyday existence. So for that, what is recreational is kind of a necessity for us when it comes to that translating, not to going into bars, but we may live in a crowded housing facility. Or when we go to work, we may have to take a crowded public transit because a lot of us are essential workers and we can't take time off. We have to pay rent, we have mouths to feed, we have supplies to like purchase and things of that nature. So it is a big puzzle. And I feel like for us in specific, not only is it the health aspect, but it's a daily life thing. And so one thing about this whole coronavirus that I am grateful is a weird term, but that I'm grateful for is it's requiring us to open our eyes and see, wow, the system, not just the health system, but the system, our existence in reality and on the whole needs to change. Too long have we been, you know, disregarded or unheard. And so now this virus is attacking black and brown people. And we're more susceptible than any other demographic. And we're seeing why and it's calling us to put people and elect people and be more active in our community and engage with each other in ways that previously we weren't. And so, and then to go on to accessibility, a lot of the times we're affected by things because the information isn't accessible to us. And I wanted to kind of combat that by saying everything that we are talking about, and especially when it comes to demographics and who's affected, age groups and stuff, you can find that on the City of Waco website. As soon as you go to it, at the top, there's, um, COVID nineteen updates. That gets updated daily and obviously more frequently than that if you just refresh it. And it has all of the latest information. And then with the FHC, the Family Health Center in Waco, hats off to them. I applaud them because even if you do have coronavirus or even if you have been exposed or you have symptoms, you can still get treatment. They have a separate area where you'll get tested. So you don't have to worry about, you know, putting others at risk. But also if you are positive and you are, and you have a comorbidity or your, um, sickle cell is acting up, you're having a flare, you can still go get treatment, even though you also have coronavirus because they have a separate clinic where they are making sure that people who are immunocompromised or people who have been exposed can still get the medical care they need. And another plug for them, sorry, I just gotta get this information out. They also have a lot of programs that help, uh, black and brown communities that isn't just health related. You know, they offer, um, breastfeeding classes over there. They even, in some cases, they give out prescriptions where we do live in a lot of food deserts in Waco. And they can prescribe vegetables, they can prescribe produce. And so they are a great resource, even if you aren't sick to just tap into. And they're literally in the center of Waco and they have, uh, facilities all sprinkled throughout the community. So just tap into that and see the resources that are available to us, especially in this time.
Well, thank you so much. I, I feel like we're just getting into this and time is of the essence. Uh, I'm gonna ask our good friends at the City of Waco, if we can continue on for just a few more minutes, maybe about ten to fifteen more minutes, because I do want to get to the testing, uh, piece there. Um, also, we had a question about where can I find the list of African American restaurants? On Facebook, it is called the Waco Black-Owned Restaurant Group. Uh, and so they have many members on that, almost three thousand. And, um, uh, Councilwoman Bearfield, can you please give us another place? Is it the African American Chamber or?
Um, I put, um, or I think I hope I got it all right, the link to the map in the questions.
Okay.
Uh, underwear was answered, so I haven't clicked it, so I don't, I hope I got it right. Um, cause I was typing it in, I didn't cut and paste it. Um, but, um, if not, I will make sure that it is placed on, um, it should, you know where it is in the City of Waco. One of the things, you know, the mayor, uh, asked us to do was we create a task force and we have a strategic communication task force. And so it, in the COVID Waco website, there's a link to the strategic communications newsletters. It will be in there. So if it's, it's in the Facebook group, go to the COVID Waco site. I'm, it, I believe ninety-eight point nine percent that it's in the, um, um, strategic communications newsletters on the COVID Waco site.
And on that, because I, I think it is so important that I get to this. We've got a lot of folks calling in and then they are really concerned, I mean, typing, tapping in and then texting me because they are very concerned. Is there a call to action for the city or the county, uh, even the NAACP chapter to really have some call to action where we are looking at the African American community and really giving that support, getting that word out? Uh, I know that we have a lot online, but that may not be how everyone gets their information. So is there a call to action? We have some fam, uh, parents who have, uh, hit me up to ask me, I'm afraid for my child to start school.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah. That is specific to the African American community, hearing these numbers, hearing these, uh, uh, health disparities, hearing these environmental things. So please talk to us about that.
Okay, let me come in on that. We are having to fix the plane while it is in flight. And we are caught, so everyone in the NAACP, starting at the, at the local level, the state level and the national level. First of all, the most important thing we believe is getting information to the community because knowledge truly is power. And in this case, knowledge is gonna save your life. And we know that so many of our people do not have the choice of staying at home, that they are going to have to go out into this environment. Uh, and what you should know is that as essential workers, you do have rights about how you can keep yourself safe. And of course, we're in, we're in this, this life where everything is in Facebook and online and those kinds of things. We want you to go to both the state NAACP's website as well as the national because there you can lodge complaints if you need to about the way that you're being treated at work, if you feel unsafe at work. We also have information there. If you are not being treated well, when you go to get information at, you know, doctor's offices and places like that, we have helped people who are in those situations because let's, let's be honest, the medical profession doesn't treat us all the same. So we need to be certain that if we, if you go in, you shouldn't have to go to five different places to get some information. If that is happening to you, then you need to contact us and let us know. And I cannot let this moment pass without letting you know that if never before, if never before, you have not realized that elections matter, pay attention to that right now because our people are dying as the result of an election. And so it's very, very important that we understand that this is a time when voting matters because it is about our lives. And so we are going to, that's the call to action there. The call to action is to get yourself registered to vote and vote. It's going to be a very difficult thing this time, but we are going to be providing you the information that you need. And I would say that we are going to have to start putting people in position who care about our health because this is not our fault. This is systemic and it is structural. But those kinds of structures are brought down by having people who can put into place policies that will help us. We have to be so grateful that we have Councilwoman Bearfield and Commissioner Miller who are at that table, who are saying, no, this is what our community needs. And no, 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 that's not gonna work for us. And oh, this is affecting us. And so they can't do it by themselves, though. They gonna need some help and that's what we need to do. I want to mention one thing that has to do with, uh, economics because it is economics that's forcing us to go to work and put our health at risk. And so I want to mention that, um, you know, Congress is putting a lot of money out there and I have been working hard to let our people know. So I want to remind you that the Paycheck Protection Program has been extended through August the eighth. And so these, the Small Business Administration is still working with that program. And the NAACP made a point, this is the National NAACP, of getting some of that money set aside for minority businesses. So this is great terms, it's easy to apply. It's a one percent fixed rate. It's forgivable if you're paying for payroll, rent and other things. And the process is very streamlined. And what I want you to do is to go to the N A A C P dot org site. That is the national site. And literally all you have to do is to click on, uh, apply now. And this is what my mama always said, y'all, let them tell you no. So you ask for what you want and let them tell you no. So you're gonna assume that you qualify. And that is for so many of our small businesses. So it, it has been extended to August the eighth, N A A C P dot org. And that is money that you more than likely will not have to give back. You will not have to pay that back as a loan. So there are many more things that I could say, but I'm gonna leave it at that.
I know we have like super tight on time.
Okay.
But, um.
Are we gonna dress the parents in school?
Uh-huh.
Okay, yes, okay.
So the call to action is gonna, is gonna encompass all of that. Okay, so the first thing, um, you know, our call to action that we made on the city level when it's when our mayor, you know, made, made the requirement that we wear face masks. And, you know, it is a responsibility of our businesses to make sure that we offer safe protocols, period. Because those are the thing, I mean, cause too many, too many, um, coupling and groupings of cases are coming from specific businesses. So it needs to be the responsibility and, and we are a business forward council. Uh, you know, regardless of what you may read in opinion polls, um, we are a business forward council. And, but one of the things that we know is without our people, we can't continue. So it is essential that our businesses have safe protocols in place to take care of not only themselves and their bottom line, but us, you know, and the people and their customers and, and their workers. Um, secondly, uh, I do want to make sure that, uh, we know that our, our, and I mentioned the mayor's task force before, there's Social Services and Education Assistance, Strategic Communication, Healthcare and Business and Financial Recovery. Um, Social Services and Education has been working diligently, running the gambit. And what I'd like to make sure that I mention is that our McLennan County Health District is working in tandem with each and every one of those task forces. is working in tandem with each and every one of those task forces. And what I've spoken with, the Health District, and they are aware as we change in this ever-fluid COVID-19, that, you know, opening schools is going to be crazy. We've been having conversations with all of the school districts, with the colleges and universities, about what that's gonna look like. And it has changed as soon as, what, today's Thursday? Tuesday, when we were sitting in council, another mandate came down from the state. So, I mean, it's changing just that quickly. But I know that towards the end of this month, the Health District is having a conversation with all of the ISDs and probably our local colleges and universities about conversations about what the classroom looks like during COVID-19. And, you know, to assure that the safety protocol is needed for whatever the decision is, if it's half-time, if it's full-time, if it's, you know, parents have the decision, the ability to make the decision to go online completely, whatever it is, that the safety protocols are in place and that we know that we want to keep them. The Health District is dedicated to making sure that the schools are as safe as possible. And any outbreaks would be managed quickly as possible. And, you know, the unfortunate is I'm leaning more towards not if, but when. So how we do it to make sure that we have as safe as possible protocols in place. Going forward, we continue to listen to our people. We continue to make sure, as Commissioner Miller and Dr. Henry have said, that we inform our public, and we do that through our trusted influencers. Everyone doesn't have access to the internet, so we get on the radio, and we get into church bulletins. And we, who's having drive-up church and all of the things, and we get on the radio shows, and we go on all of them and put up signs in businesses. We go as many, where the people are, we meet people where they are because everybody is not going to learn here, see, or do the same way. But we also have to understand and have the conversations with, as much as we like to gather fellowship, we're gonna have to stop that. And we're gonna have to do some of the things that are uncomfortable and awful. I mean, y'all, you know, all of the things affect you, right? And you see, but, you know, you have that one number that is like, what? And, you know, I have a birthday next week, and this woman is near my age who died today. It's not okay. And we've got to make sure that we are expressing the severity of this and that, you know, in the 11% of asymptomatic McLinnan County African American residents, you know, that that's 11%, they're asymptomatic. And 5% of that 11% had no underlying condition. So they didn't have any underlying physical conditions. It was a social determinant that brought that on. So these are all the things that we're gonna have to make sure that when we hear from Dr. Newman, and we hear from Dr. Griggs, and we hear from Dr. Werner, that even that they understand that that means, I know, because so-and-so has a 50th birthday party, but we all can't go. And we need to stay at home, and we need to have a crazy Zoom party because our life depends on it. And, you know, as the good folks, Christian folks say, my non-believers do what you do. But, you know, watch, fight, and pray. So we've got to do all of those things. You know, we have to watch the information, the science and the data. We've got to fight by wearing masks and being physically distant. And we've got to pray for strength and endurance and the wisdom to do the things that we need to do to be victorious and independent.
Well, you heard it from Reverend Councilwoman Bearfield. I thank you, pal, but I really have got to get into the testing piece. We cannot leave without that piece. We had someone asking about, are there enough tests? Test, where can I get tests? Can I get the tests free? If not, what are the costs for tests? Dr. Newman, can you share with us testing in this area?
Yes, you know, testing has been an issue all along. Again, this is part of, you know, government not having, since the beginning, we didn't have the materials we needed to protect healthcare workers. We didn't have the materials to test. We don't have a lot of the things that we would normally expect our great country to have. When we were not tested, when our incidence was very low because of the great work that our government did to shelter in place, we were doing fine. Once, we've had this big surge, we are struggling some. Two weeks ago tomorrow, CPL, our local lab, stopped taking our samples from Family Health Center and from other clinics, including Premier ER, which was the other place that was doing testing outside of the hospitals because they were overwhelmed with tests. Fortunately, Family Health Center was in the process of switching over to our own in-house testing, which we're doing right now. So we're doing antigen testing in-house. It takes about 15 minutes to get a turnaround. It's a really effective test, precise test. We're very certain of the results when we get them. And so if you need to be tested, this is one of the places that you can do it. Most of the time, COVID testing is being covered, so price should not be an issue, especially not at Family Health Center. And so again, we gave you that number earlier, three one three forty six ten. Come in, if you call before 2:00 o'clock, most of the time, we'll try to, and you have COVID symptoms, we'll try to get you in the same day, if not the next day, for testing. But we are testing mostly symptomatic people because there is a question about supplies. And also because treating, testing symptomatic people is what's gonna help us contact trace and try to decrease further transmission. If you're the contact of a contact, which at this point, most of us are a contact of a contact, then just treat, and you're having any symptoms, come in and get tested. If you're not having symptoms, but you're the contact of a contact, treat yourself as if you are infected and stay away from other people, and don't go to your uncle's birthday party. And don't go to work. There are laws to protect you from that. The one other thing that I did want to say, super important in regards to testing, is that, as we talked about earlier, there have been, we recognize in medicine that there has been a long history of not taking our vulnerable populations, especially African American, into account. Currently, Family Health Center is starting to do antibody testing. So remember, antibodies are what happens once you've been infected. And since so many of us may have gotten infected without symptoms, it's important to know how has it spread in our community. And so Family Health Center, along with Baylor, is doing a big study on antibody testing in the community. We have 650 participants so far, and only 8% are African American. We need representation. It is hard for us to start changing the system if we don't participate in it. If we don't come to the table and say, listen to me, hear me, what's going on with me? Then it's hard for us to respond as well. So please try to get registered in the study. They take a blood sample a couple of times in the next few months. You can register, when you register for it, you're in the running for an ATP card from $10 to $100. You can sign up for it on Facebook at Waco COVID, and also on Twitter at Waco COVID. And there is, so if you go to the Waco COVID webpage, there should be a link to sign up for that antibody test. So remember, antibodies are, you've been infected, you may not have had symptoms. It's important for us to know how this has been transmitting in our communities so we can start responding to it better. And are we building up immunity? If you've gotten it, if you were exposed, do you have any protection left? So there's lots of questions we still have around this virus, and we need to be able to know how it is affecting African Americans in particular. And so please sign up for that.
Thank you so much. I could be with these incredible young women, this panelist today. I could be with them all day. They have so much great information for us. But we're coming to the close, and I just wanted to say, there are some people behind the scenes making this happen. Thank you, City Secretary Ms. Esmeralda Hudson and Larry Hosey for being behind the scenes, making this easy for us to come to you today. I also want to thank the NAACP, the City of Waco, McLinnan County, and the Family Health Center for bringing this culturally-specific panel discussion about COVID and its impact on the African American community. Dr. King said, "Of all forms of inequity, injustice in health is the most shocking and inhumane." As we come to a close, I want to thank you all for tuning in, and I want to thank our panel of experts, but I hope that you will take this information and share it tonight, share it with your family, with your friends, and with your community. And let's continue to keep each other safe and informed, but more importantly, healthy. Good night, everyone.
Night, ladies.
Good night.
All righty.
All righty.
You're the operation again, as always, you're the specialist.